Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council. Welcome to councillors, to staff, to the public and to the media, if there are any. We will go straight into apologies, there's no public forum today, so we have apologies from councillors O'Malley and Stedman. I'll move that those apologies be accepted. Seconding councillor Staines, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. I'll move on to the confirmation of the agenda. I'll move that the council confirms the agenda with the following alterations in regard to standing order 2.1 Option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments. Seconding councillor Staines, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item four, declarations of interest. I'll move that the council... Are there any changes in additions to or amendments to our elected members' interest register? There aren't, and then I'll note, I'll move that council notes the elected members' interest register, attachment A, and confirms the proposed management plan for elected members' interests, and further, that council notes the executive leadership team's interest register attached as attachment A. Seconding councillor Staines. Any discussion on that? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Now, on to item five, reports. Mayor's Task Force for Housing, a housing action plan for Dunedin. Can I invite the team? Welcome.
Good morning. I want to firstly acknowledge that we have members of the Mayor's Task Force within the council chambers. The task force was brought together a year ago, just over a year ago, at the request of the mayor to consider four key housing concerns: healthy housing, social housing and emergency housing and affordable housing. The task force has contributed close to 1,800 hours of work over this last year to look at what are quite complex issues currently and potentially for the city in the longer term. And attached with our staff report is a summary of, is the report from the Mayor's Task Force, which staff won't talk to in detail because it's not a staff report, the Mayor's Task Force report is from task force members, but happy to answer any questions related to the staff report and our recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joy. Councillors, now questions, and just to making that distinction between the staff report and the Mayor's Task Force report. So, questions. Councillor Van Dees.
Looking at the Task Force for Housing members, which is on page 51, I note that there are a number of different organisations involved. We have some real estate agents that are involved, Presbyte and Support Otago, Runaca, Community Housing Aotearoa, Public Health South, Housing New Zealand, University of Otago, Department of Corrections, Salvation Army, but I don't see any builders or developers actually being involved. The people that actually build the houses and actually have the issues with profitability and making housing happen. Why is it that there are no builders or developers included in the Task Force for Housing? I would have thought they were fundamental to creating new housing.
Well, I'm not sure...
I can answer that.
You can answer that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Joy.
We agree, we thought they were fundamental. We outreach to quite a number of developers in the invitation stage to be part of the Mayor's Task Force for Housing. A number of developers didn't respond at all, despite follow-up and some just declined. Therefore, what we did do through this process and in working with the task force was hold the housing summit in the city earlier this year, and that was specifically targeted, as well as to get feedback from the wider community and community groups at engaging with and listening to and getting feedback from developers. And a third, around about a third of the people that attended that, about a third of the 150 were developers, landowners or builders, and they gave us very strong feedback, which has about a number of issues which have been integrated into the Mayor's Task Force for Housing report.
Thank you for that, and I'm pleased to hear that there has been engagement with the people who actually build the houses, and you have just said that a lot of what they have said has been transferred into this report. I also have been speaking with developers and builders, in fact, come from a long line of builders, six generations of them in my own family, and the issues that I hear from these builders have been along the lines of land too expensive, consent costs too high, especially compared with Christchurch, for instance, and a lot of other issues which arise from restrictions in the second generation plan, particularly relocatable buildings, et cetera. Why have these issues, the reasons that actually cause a lot of increased cost in housing locally and things we could do something about, why are they not included in this report?
So, a number of staff attended the housing summit, and I do know that the city development team have taken on a number of pieces of feedback from developers, which includes some of the things that you have referenced and are considering that within the 2GP review. People also requested, developers also requested a navigator-type facilitator that is suggested in the report, for council to look, in general terms, council looking at how it makes development more developer-friendly is actually addressed, I believe, in the Mayor's Task Force report. Well, I don't believe, it is there, sorry. I don't want to talk too much to their report, but it is referenced in there, but in a more general, broad term.
Other questions, councillors? Councillor Y.
Thank you, Worship. Ms Gunn, where has the MPs been involved? Have discussions started and gauging with them? Because obviously a lot of this work references working with government and getting them to assist in the possible ways.
Yes, so I would have to say we had a bit of centers of the MPs at the summit, and we've had different engagements with them. In fact, MP Claire Curran did help us facilitate a meeting with central government representatives earlier this year to talk about opportunities for the city.
When we see in the media a lot of reference about housing in Auckland especially, have we actually put this on the radar with David Clarke and Claire Curran? Quite forcefully, is what I'm trying to get at.
It, well, I can't speak to how forcefully. What I can say is that it has been directly, information has been directly received and acknowledged by Minister Twyford's office, Minister Clarke's office, and certainly we believe that we have been making quite a clear case over the last year for Dunedin's, Dunedin to be looked at against others, you know, along with other cities, and that some of our problems here, and we met with, for example, the Housing New Zealand Board last year and other agencies to discuss our issues in the city, and have really tried to put Dunedin on the central government radar.
Do we have an estimate of what it costs to build per metre in the city? And how that compares to the rest of the country?
Per metre, no, but I know we did a general reference to building cost in the Mayor's Task Force plan, I'm trying to think what it was. I know it was no longer what we consider to be affordable, which is about $250,000 to own a home, it was somewhere up in the $100,000 more plus to build.
It was on the 200 square metre?
Well, it was just if you wanted to build something that could accommodate it, and it was the cheapest but quality build that you could get, you'd be looking at least $350, depending on obviously land cost and where it was.
Okay. On page 34, there's reference to 360 houses and 355 houses built in the last two years. Do we know what the projection is for this year?
I don't, sorry, but we can come back to note that, I think that came from their planning team.
Okay, but still it's way short of the 750 that...
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And where does, I saw no mention of Airbnb and the factor of what that has done to housing in the city.
I believe that was referenced though lightly within the Task Force report. I know that we did a little piece of work in the middle of last year where we thought Airbnb would be more vacant, just to see how many properties were now Airbnb. At that point, because we just looked at single houses, so not rooms, but if you had a whole house and there were about 100 homes that were being utilized for that, rather than being utilized for other purposes such as longer-term rentals or to provide transitional housing in the city. So we chose that time so that we could see, thinking that would be the highest vacancy, but it's quite difficult to obtain that information on a comprehensive basis.
And the other thing I guess I took from the report was, there's really a focus around smaller two-bedroom units required, rather than building 180 square metre houses on sections and really increasing smaller footprints, smaller rentals.
Yes, definitely, and that has come from our city planning team and anecdotally, we do have an aging population. To the flip side of that, we do also need some larger homes for our younger Maori Pacific population, for our refugee communities as well, so we can't just say it's all about two and one-bedroom houses, but that is where the highest demand is sitting currently, and we expect it will sit in the future.
Councillor Gary.
Ms Gunn, I wonder if you could comment on a comparison with other cities and the efforts other cities have made to address housing issues, albeit we know we have specific issues in this city.
I can comment on some, but I'm not aware of all the work happening across all the TLAs. I do know that we are one of about six cities that's initiated a Mayor's Task Force approach to looking at housing, and that's due to cities understanding this is a community-wide, city-wide issue. A number of cities are engaging directly, Wellington and Auckland with central government, clearly due to their level of housing need, and obviously Queenstown has also had an arrangement with government where it's zoned particular land for a more affordable housing and been able to access funding from government. The conversations we have had with central government about a range of different opportunities that council, in partnership with community housing providers, could look to and also with developers, so I think many cities are now looking at those sorts of options. The need to seek some form of investment by central government is absolutely imperative to housing, you know, to us achieving housing solutions for our city, and I think those cities that are doing that with central government are going to be more successful.
Thank you for that. And my second question is, are you confident that all aspects of the issue were explored in depth through the Mayor's Task Force? I was certainly impressed with the summit, which was at the end of the process, and the various groups involved and the feedback at that particular, on that particular occasion, but are you confident that all aspects of the issues have been explored?
Yes, I believe that we have, when we look at the mandate for the Task Force, if we go back to its terms of reference, I believe the Task Force has achieved what it was asked by council to undertake. I think that is because of the expertise and the cross-organizational nature of the Task Force, which is why that model of cross-sector engagement was used and expertise. Certainly, people have addressed concerns about, you know, everything from healthy homes, also your note in the Mayor's Task Report, reference to accessible housing for people with accessibility and mobility issues. So I think we've touched on some things too that originally, through the Task Force terms of reference, weren't anticipated. I think that the housing, like all key sectors, will change and continue to change, and it's about how we continue to be abreast of and hopefully ahead of some of those changes so that we can be successful in providing adequate housing for our citizens.
Councillor Elder.
Thank you, Chair. I want to congratulate you on work well done, and it's a work in progress, as you said. I've just got a couple of questions, and it relates to something Andrew said, and that is tourist accommodation and how it affects housing. And I was just wondering if that Airbnb, the growth in tourism and the need for more spaces for people to stay in Dunedin has been addressed in that, or needs to be addressed, as you see it? So looking at tourist accommodation alongside of...
I think through the process of working with the Task Force, we acknowledge that there is a percentage of housing that's gone out of the rental market into providing accommodation for visitors. It's important as a city in delivering against our key strategies that we are also a vibrant, you know, visitor-friendly tourist destination. So I think outside of the housing work, I think there is, there are probably discussions to be had around how that happens in the city, but we didn't specifically focus on that with this report.
That would be another piece of work alongside, maybe?
Actually, if people felt that that should be looked at, yes.
And the other one was just about infill and the dream of having a more concentrated city and the property developers' concerns about the uptake of that. And I was just wondering, going forward, do we need to, in the plan, have some spare space, say, put aside just in case the infill doesn't happen, so that we can respond quickly to the demand?
I think that the Mayor's Task Force plan, I don't want to talk too much to that, but does reference use of public land as a recommendation. Also, I know the 2GP, the team reviewing the 2GP looked at feedback that they had from developers about infill housing or being able to build on the back of your section, specifically being aimed at someone who was a family member, and the need for council to re-look at that, and I believe that will be considered, that is being considered at the moment.
Oh, that's a great, thank you very much.
Other questions, councillors? Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Worship. Just indicating that I'm willing to move that council adopt, not note as per the order paper, but adopt the recommendations of the Mayor's Task Force for Housing report and the further recommendations as drafted.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, then I'll take that. Is there a seconder? Seconding councillor Laufisso. Councillor Hawkins, do you wish to speak to in the first instance?
Thank you, thank you, Worship, you do, and I'd like to start by extending my thanks on behalf of both myself and councillor Laufisso, but also all of council and our community to those who have given so willingly of their time to support this work through being members of the Mayor's Task Force for Housing. 1,800 hours of volunteer effort these people have put in to give us the most rounded understanding of the, not just the challenges, but the potential solutions to those that you could possibly muster with an unpaid workforce. So thank you, even if they're only here to make sure I don't misrepresent them. I appreciate their attendance here today, there's too many of them to name all of them, and it would be unfair to select some, but thank you on behalf of all of us. Five years ago, when I started in this job, the focus of our conversation around housing was around housing quality mainly, and we were obsessed with trying to get a rental warrant of fitness done and housing that made people sick. And while those are still issues in our community, there's no doubt about that, by the time we started this work just over a year ago, the real challenge that we are facing increasingly here is around housing affordability, and not just around people buying houses, which is, which occupies much of the mainstream narrative around housing around the country, but increasingly the ability to be able to rent housing. And the focus of the work that the Task Force was doing, and therefore the focus of this report, is on those in our community with the greatest need. This is a great time to be in Dunedin, there's a lot of really positive and really exciting things happening, but all of that is meaningless if we're not also a city that makes effort to look after, look after people properly, and if people can't also access adequate and affordable housing, then what is the point of being able to celebrate everything else that's going well for us? People like to ask the question, is this a crisis? And I don't know if that's the most helpful question to ask, because clearly, for anybody who's in a situation where they can't access adequate and affordable housing, it is a crisis for that person and for that family, and as such, we have a responsibility to try and fix that, and the one thing we're certainly hearing loud and clear from our community is that there are more of those people every day. I won't dwell on the issues or the context unnecessarily, I'll take that as read in the report, because at this point, our energy has to focus on fixing it. Because a year of navel gasing, as has been pointed out by many of our Task Force representatives who have sat on similar fora in the past, won't help a single family, which is why we're asking council to commit to being an active part of the solution in this work. And there are specific things that have been pointed out, and some have been touched on in questions. There's the idea that we have a navigator function within council to assist residential developers going through the resource consent and building consent process. It's feedback we got loud and clear from the development community through the housing summit, it makes perfect sense, and so this is what we're recommending that we do. Looking at council-owned land and public land, and looking at whether it might not be better used for, let's say, residential development as opposed to at-grade car parking, and looking at how we can use the development contributions mechanism to incentivize development that's more closely aligned with what council's housing priorities are, whether that's in a city residential and there's a council resolution that speaks to that, whether that's encouraging community housing or public housing. The Task Force doesn't have a fixed view on it, other than it seems like a logical thing to explore when we're looking at how we might be able to push it. One thing that has come from, that's included in the staff report, but not ours, but that I personally can endorse, is the request for resourcing for this work. This work has been carried by the community development team, they're a compact unit, and I'd like to thank Ms Gunn and Mr Coffey and more latterly Ms McLennan-Kissell for their work in doing this. It's remarkable to put together a body of work like this on top of everything else that they are expected to do as part of supporting the work of this council, and we won't get traction on this issue if there isn't a greater degree of resourcing made available to support this work internally. So that's what we can do as council. There's also obviously a strong advocacy function, I think. You know, the housing quality issues that I talked to earlier, to a degree, a lot of those hopefully have been resolved through legislation introduced by both previous government and the current one around rental standards, through the Healthy Homes Guarantee Act, which will take effect by 2021, but as we've seen very locally, very recently, standards for rental properties are meaningless if we don't have adequate resourcing for monitoring and enforcing those. So one of the recommendations is to ensure that MB have enough resource available to do the monitoring and enforcement work and not leave the burden of that on tenants. There's also a note in here to push for an increase to the accommodation supplement, which is essentially a subsidy of private landlords that was introduced by government, acknowledging that they can't provide public housing for everyone who needs it, so they'll subsidize market rentals for people who need support. And Dunedin currently, that's capped at $80. It was reviewed recently, I understand, and the decision by the ministry was that that was still an adequate limit in Dunedin, but that certainly doesn't match what we're seeing in the private market, private rental market in Dunedin, and so I think that needs urgently addressed by MSD to be able to achieve what it wants to. And lastly, there's recommendations in here around reviewing the Building Act, which is currently up for review, but any review of that legislation is meaningless if it doesn't address the ability to be flexible to local conditions, particularly local climate, and be flexible in terms of facing an uncertain climate future. But our most powerful role, I think, as council in this work is as a facilitator. MSD have currently in their public housing plan for Dunedin funded 55 more public housing units. They will build some, but they're open to community housing providers and others building them. We are recommending that council work with private developers and landowners and community housing providers to get those 55 units committed to as soon as possible, because at that point, once those, that allocation is exhausted, we can use that as leverage to push for more support from government and more funding for public housing. Because we need more, exactly how many we don't know, more than 55, when we've got waiting lists in the hundreds. But we don't know what we don't know, and which is why the housing needs assessment work is so incredibly important, because if we want to end homelessness in Dunedin, for example, that's difficult to do if we don't know what our sleeping rough population is, if we don't know whether the needs of women in particular are met by emergency housing provision, if we don't have a detailed understanding of the different demands and needs for our older residents. And so, this isn't, doesn't exist in a vacuum, the MPSUDC work has been mentioned, there's work going on around staffing, around accommodating staff and the hospital rebuild, et cetera. And again, re affordability, it would be a whole lot easier for people to be able to afford housing if they had more money, and whether that's, you know, raising the raising benefits, or paying people a living wage, or supporting people to be able to front up on that side of the equation and be able to be more self-sufficient. Housing is a major plank of council's social wellbeing strategy, but this is also important from an economic, economic development point of view, because people who live in houses that make them sick can't turn up for work, and we're not going to be able to do a particularly good job of attracting people to want to come and live and work here if we can't assure them that we can provide affordable and adequate housing in the city. Because above all else, this is the right thing for us to be doing, and it would be an absolute shame if the 1,800 hours of volunteer effort that has gone into producing this report wasn't picked up by this council and driven as much as we can to come up with both the short and long-term solutions that we need to address the housing challenges that we face. It's not an easy thing to do, but it is the right thing to do, and I'd like to thank this council actually for granting me the privilege of being able to be part of this work. It's been one of the more rewarding things that we've been able to do, and I look forward to support for these recommendations that have been set up by this group.
Kia ora. Thank you. Councillor Van Dees.
I think we all agree that we need more and more affordable houses. There are 16 actions I'd itemized in this report, and those actions cover generally advocacy, showing leadership, assessment, facilitation, need for a navigator, and generally speaking, they are of a bureaucratic nature. The need for a navigator, I believe, highlights the obstructive complexity of compliance bureaucracy. This is a recurrent theme that you will find any builder in Dunedin wants to talk about as soon as you start getting into their difficulties in producing houses. I recognize that a lot of the obstructive complexity of compliance is driven by central government, but we shouldn't overlook the fact that quite a lot of the compliance issues are made more expensive by our particular bureaucracy. And I'll give you a particular example. If you want to put in a septic tank in Dunedin, you have to pay a DCC-registered designer to do the work, and I've done that recently, it costs about $500, and you have to get a registered drain layer and all that to actually build the thing, and then you have to pay a DCC inspector to come out and check that the certified design and the build have gone according to plan. When the designer comes out to the farm, and I've got one 15 minutes from here, he has to dig a hole and pour water in it and check that the porosity in the lay of the land is all okay, he has to get all the plans organized of the contours of the land and the, where the house sits in relation to the boundaries and all this sort of stuff. He gets all of that done, and he does all of that work for $500. The charge for a DCC building inspector to come out is almost double that, and all he has to do is get in a car, 15 minutes, have a look, just see that it's been done right, sign it off and go away. done right, sign it off and go away. In Christchurch, I believe the cost is half for the same building inspection. Now, I've picked on one particular example, and that may be unfair because there'll be checks and balances and different things will be done a bit differently in different councils. But it does indicate, however, that there are contributing consent charges, particularly to Dunedin, that seem to add to the cost of housing. What I believe adds much more significantly to the cost of houses in Dunedin is the cost of land. And again, there are three major levers that we have not well identified in this report, which affect the cost of land. They are our spatial plan, our transportation strategy and the second generation plan. Now, Joy Gunn has already noted that there are changes afoot, necessary changes, to the second generation plan as a result of feedback from developers, and I'm very glad to hear that. However, the underlying assumptions of the spatial plan, transportation strategy and second generation plan remain, and those assumptions, assumptions that may have looked okay 10 years ago, have turned out to be fundamentally false. Those assumptions were that we were going to have increasingly unaffordable oil, which is why we had to concentrate a small city joined by cycleways. And that we had to move away from using cars, especially into semi-rural and rural areas, because they were going to be unsustainably polluting. Both of those assumptions have been proven to be false. The price of oil has been more stable than just about any other commodity over 100 years, except for the First World War. And in terms of car pollution, cars have continued to become far more efficient, far less polluting. And the uptake of electric cars, which Dunedin leads the country in, is basically reducing that pollution argument to near zero. So the requirement that we concentrate all our building in the centre of city has had the effect of increasing section prices to the extent that now you cannot buy a section in preferred areas of Dunedin for under about $400,000, which is most people's budget for a whole house. If you go a bit further afield, the sections do get cheaper. If you go a good bit further afield into semi-rural or rural areas, your section cost becomes extremely low, except that under the 2GP, you're not allowed to build there anymore. It was tough enough under the old rules where you had to have 15 hectares, a massive area of land.
Councilor, can I suggest that you speak to the motion? And you're way off subject now. We've got, we've got some recommended, recommended resolutions here. And they are the report from the Mayor's Task Force for Housing and the staff report. And you're commenting on 2GP and things that are not relevant. So please stick to the subject.
With respect, I believe the price of land is incredibly relevant and that the levers that we have...
Look, I'm just directing you to speak to this and not to all of the other issues. Please, stick to the subject.
Well, can you define the subject, please? I thought affordability of housing was it?
If you don't understand the words in front of you that are the resolution, there's not much point in my explaining it to you.
The resolution wants us to vote for 16 actions, none of which, I believe, address the fundamental issues. The fundamental issues are cost of land, which we can and have affected directly and which we have raised through the plans that I have said, plans built on what I believe to be false assumptions. The requirement for, again, under the second generation plan, for houses to be relocatable if they are built in South Dunedin adds another extraordinary level of cost, to the extent that you will find very little residential development possible now in South Dunedin or in low-lying areas. Because when you add relocatable as a requirement to building a house, that simply dramatically adds the cost and means that they won't get built. So not only can we not build in our semi-rural or in rural areas anymore, we can't build in South Dunedin or low-lying areas either because of this relocatable requirement, which I believe is simply one of the major barriers to the more houses that we need. This plan, although I think it has good intent and perhaps some advocacy, leadership, assessment, facilitation, navigator may be helpful, it doesn't address your fundamental reasons for why housing has become so expensive and so difficult and in such short supply in Dunedin. We have in Dunedin options here to actually supply much more land, to actually recognize that with new technology, if you build a house in a rural or semi-rural area, you don't need to provide drainage services. You don't need to provide electricity. This could be off-grid solar. You don't need to provide all the things that were reasons for not allowing it. We have, as a council, looked at old plans that are now out of date, built on assumptions that are no longer relevant, and failed to recognize the enormous development potential for housing that now exists affordably as a result of the new technologies. Now, I note that one of the 16 assumptions here does actually mention new technology. I just can't quite see it here. But, yeah, sorry, utilize and encourage new technology and construction methods. Those new technology and construction methods allow housing to be built on cheap land outside the city limits without any of the negatives that were the case in decades gone by. We need to completely reassess not just the 2GP, but our transportation strategy and our spatial plan and ask ourselves why it is that we are now trying to limit where people can build houses with an aerial view amenity view of the world rather than a terrestrial view, which is what people experience. If we are going to stick to zoning for building with a view that's taken from a helicopter or a satellite and say, no, this is the number of square hectares that you must have in order to build a house, and not actually look from the ground at the actual visual and amenity effects that it has, then we are going to continue with what I believe is to be a prescriptive and actually somewhat lazy view of deciding where things are going to be built rather than the actual, focusing on the actual visual amenity issues, which I believe are quite valid and do need some kind of restriction. We need to recognize there's enormous potential for Dunedin to develop a great deal of housing. And we need to recognize that a lot of that housing is not being built because of our own policies, spatial plan, transportation strategy and the second generation plan.
Thank you, Councilor Gary.
Thank you, Your Worship. I want to begin by acknowledging my colleague, Councilor Hawkins, and thanking him for his leadership as Chair of the Mayor's Task Force for Housing, the staff and the people behind me for all of their incredible work. I was very impressed when I went along to the summit, which was my first interaction with the work. And I was impressed at the breadth of it, the comprehensive nature of it and the depth of it. I am disappointed to hear this morning that the developers and builders did not take up that invitation in the first place, and it does explain the feedback received at the summit. However, it was good to get that feedback. There's several things I just want to comment on at this point. I'm very much in support of the motion. The first thing that I wanted to comment on was a slight gap, perhaps, in something that has been mentioned. So the word developer conjures up people who are developing a large number of sections and are commercial developers. But there are also the mom and pop developers, people who have a bit of spare land and want to subdivide their section. And for them, navigating their way through the processes is extremely difficult because it is a very complex matter. And there's a need to engage a professional to guide you through that, and that is a very expensive process. And there's a bit of unknown in it, which makes people very nervous. I thought the focus on the navigation tool for developers generally was a very helpful one. And it's not to say that our staff are doing anything wrong or not doing their job well. Quite the opposite. But it's about the coordination across council because we're a very big organization. And if you're developing, if you're subdividing, you have to deal with a whole lot of different departments. So that is a difficulty. So I thought that was a very positive outcome. But don't forget those small developers who maybe have never had an experience of that before. Also, I was very pleased to see the note in the summit around the houses, the prefabricated houses. And I know there was representatives from Wellington involved with that. I've been involved with a constituent who built a house that was a prefab house. It was built in lower hut. It was then transported down and built on site in three days on quite a, quite a difficult, challenging section. The section had laid empty for many, many years. And this house has made a very light footprint on that particular bit of land. And at every juncture, staff who came to inspect it at the building consent stage, staff who went to deal with the landowner on a number of other matters, commented, as did the eco-housing advisor, our advisor, on what a great model that was for housing going forward. But our processes yet have to catch up with that. So we've got a bit of work to do on that and we know that we have a bit of work to do on that. So it was great to see that discussed and noted in that process. So I will be supporting this motion. I think, as I said, that the depth and breadth of the issue was explored extremely well. And I want to thank all of those involved to get us to this point. And it's now up to us to take it to the next stage.
Councilor Wally.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think the, this paper is actually extremely relevant and a very good document in sense of using to go forward. I also would congratulate everybody involved in the Task Force for Housing that have done the work and chaired by Councilor Hawkins. And, but also, there is a, the contribution of the 1,800-plus hours of community engagement, I think is huge. I am too a little frustrated to hear that the developers haven't, and the builders, construction industry in Dunedin haven't really come to the table. But I think, you know, at times, we haven't actually been the best at bringing them to the table. And I think there is a pathway there where I would like to see us work on that a little bit harder and engage with them a little bit more effectively. I think when we look through this paper, the stat that really stands out to me is the fact that we had 1,800 new people come in one year, 1,900 of the other year, in the last two years. So that's 3,700 people that have moved to our city. Now, that's a great positive for economic development and other aspects of our city. But unfortunately, we didn't really plan for it. They have come, but we haven't quite kept up. And now we're playing catch-up. When we require 750 new homes every year, and in the last two years, we've only built 360 and 355, we're definitely falling behind the eight ball. The other aspect of this is we don't want to actually go full speed ahead and end up back in a situation where we go to leaky homes and crap construction and things like that. We want to actually make sure we do it effectively. And when I look at the density issues and smaller units and on the odd occasion or some occasions where bigger houses are required, but more so actually making them housing efficient. Because again, the other part is we don't want to build more houses and actually have more admissions to our healthcare sector at the same time. I think the key that I look at is that we can do a little bit more around the healthy homes and the eco-efficiency. And one of the things I've talked about for a couple of years or three years plus is that, you know, if you build a house that's energy efficiency of eight plus, you should get one year rates free. And if you go 10 plus energy efficiency, you should get rates free for three years. That is going to really encourage everybody to lift the standard of their house, new builds. I would like to see a lot more input from the, our MPs and a lot more work done with our MPs. I did note that on one page, we did talk about, so bear with me quickly. On page 47, we talked about where council was enabled a land to streamline consenting and support partnerships in community housing trust. Central government should commit the additional finance where required to deliver permanently affordable homes. And I do think they have a bigger part to play. And we do have two MPs that have really championed this in the past, and I'd like to see them really lead this for us as well. But I think all in all, I think we do need to action this. And I, again, applaud this pace at which the group behind us has done, but we are starting to pay for some of the success stories we have had.
Councilor Eldon.
I too want to applaud all the work that Erin and the team have done. You've done a great job. Who would have thought in 2012, New Zealand had a negative net migration? 2014, 25,000 extra, 15, 50,000 extra, 16, 70,000 extra, 17, 75,000 extra and 18, we've gone down a wee bit, it's 65,000 extra. That's exponential growth across New Zealand. Most cities are dealing with this problem. The, alongside that, our annual visitor growth in the last five years has gone up 1.2 million and is expected to go up to 5.1 million by 2024. So we have a big explosion in a need for accommodation across New Zealand and across sectors. So this is a moving feast. In 2012, we didn't even know we had this problem. And what I think is that all New Zealanders believe that every New Zealander should be able to afford either to rent or buy a warm, dry, affordable home. And so congratulations on the work done. I, I hear what you're saying in the sense of it's a moving feast. And I love hearing what you said about the ability to be flexible in this plan and talking about infill and maybe having not just families being able to live on it in full, but also other people. So I encourage you to be flexible and move with what the feedback is you're getting. And I can hear that in what you're saying. So I just want to congratulate Erin, Marie, the whole team for working on this and encourage you to be flexible and open and moving forward. So congratulations.
Councilor Wilson.
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat all the words that everyone has already said in support because I genuinely agree with them all. My one concern here is that, and it's highlighted with the comments of Councilor Ardenow, is that we are reacting very much to levers that we don't hold ownership of. Sorry, that's... And, and that whether we've got enough actions in here and monitoring of what may change. What has amazed me is how much tourism industry prices for non-daily use have actually affected the residential market in Dunedin and throughout New Zealand. And it seems peculiar that we've got into a situation where teneting a place for a long-term tenant seems to be harder than doing it for tourism. It seems odd and peculiar that that would happen. And it does, and it concerns me that that would happen. But I, I suppose the only action that I don't see in here that I'm, and I hope will be, if someone is doing monitoring, I don't think it's necessarily Dunedin City Council's job to do that. But I think as we advocate, we need to be making sure that we're understanding better the market in the long term, that we're not just reacting continually, but keeping up with those trends.
to the speakers. Well, could I add my voice to the gratitude, to the team, that entire team, volunteers, councillors, staff, who brought this to us? Thank you all for that. Um, I think this, the, the findings of this, um, task force, and it was set up to find the facts. That's what it was designed to do. To find the facts, um, as they pertain to our city. Uh, and they, the facts as they've been outlaid, outlined to us vindicate the concern that we, a lot of us expressed some years ago. Um, this hasn't come as a surprise, but we didn't have cl- a clear understanding of the data. But I would point out that this is not peculiar to Dunedin. This is not something, uh, that's happened, um, because of failings of, as councillor Van de Vis says, our spatial plan, our two GP or whatever. This, these types of issues are faced by every single community in New Zealand. It's just taken a little longer to get to Dunedin because we weren't a growth, uh, weren't a growth city, uh, for quite some time. But certainly for the last six or seven years, these, uh, issues have been, um, getting steadily worse in some of the, in the growth areas like Toorong and Hamilton and Auckland. Housing issues, as has been pointed out, don't only, uh, affect, uh, our economic wellbeing, but they affect dismally our social wellbeing. And that is why these issues are of concern to council and it's why we have a responsibility to respond to this. In fact, we're the only agency that can in some ways facilitate some of the actions that will be needed, whether they're regulatory or in the navigator's sphere, or whether it's, um, just coordinating, um, other actors in the area. Um, but we now have, um, the facts and it is time for action. And I'll point out that we have assumed responsibility as a council for these issues in two of our strategies. Our economic development strategy and our social wellbeing strategy. In fact, one of the three pillars of the social wellbeing strategy is housing. Housing availability, housing affordability and housing quality. They are critical to the wellbeing of our community. And so I, I very much welcome, um, all of the recommendations that are in here. And as has been pointed out round the table, there may be other things we can, uh, as a council we can do too. And we should be looking for any way we can to, um, facilitate, um, the, the, um, development of more housing for our community. So I, I commend this, um, these recommendations to, uh, to council. If there's another speaker, councillor Hawkins, your right of reply.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and thank you colleagues for your support. Um, just in response to a few things, a few people have quite rightly raised the spectre of where were the developers? And I think it was probably Pollyanna-ish of us to expect that they would come on board from the beginning and help us do this work because why would they risk, uh, wasting their time on a volunteer talk fest for twelve months? Um, and, and they're right to be sceptical. But what we did manage to do is get them to come to the housing summit and they were universally positive about that experience to a greater degree, I would suggest, than either they or us expected them to be. And that, that I think gives me great heart that they are prepared to engage in this work and that is an ongoing conversation that's being led by, uh, Mr Christie and others, uh, around, um, trying to coordinate, facilitate development, um, to meet our, our strategic objectives. Um, councillor Wiley mentioned rates relief for building to greater than the Building Act standards. I mean, that's a mechanism that can be explored alongside things like development contributions relief. I mean, my preference would be fixing the Building Act so that building high-quality housing was just something that people had to do. Um, but in the meantime, if we're not going to get that far, then I guess we can explore that as local options. Um, I'm not entirely sure where councillor Van de Vis's example around compliance costs was going. While I admit that in my first student flat, I could reach the fridge from the toilet, um, I don't think many people have ambitions or aspirations of living in a septic tank. Um, and, and I think beyond that, as has been pointed out by councillor Wiley and others, uh, the idea of deregulating the building industry is something we have only to look to the nineteen nineties to see, um, what detrimental long-term effects, uh, can, can come from, uh, the more libertarian mindset. And local government around the country is still carrying the can for, um, some fairly disastrous decision-making, uh, on that front. Um, the idea of rezoning land as a panacea for housing affordability, um, I think is incredibly naive. The logic, uh, is that if you flood the market with land that's suitable and available for residential development, then the market, uh, thanks to that oversupply, uh, will drive down the price. Well, what confidence would you have that that land just won't get banked by those who own it and drip-fed slowly so, so as to artificially increase, uh, the value of that land for development? Uh, but this focus on subdividing land for urban sprawl addresses only one part of the problem. We're talking about the most impacted people in our community. That has been the focus of this work. Um, and people on a benefit who can't afford to rent a house, uh, in Dunedin aren't going to go buying, go out to buy a two-hectare subdivision, uh, out on the rural fringes. That is not what this work is setting out to do. This work is trying to get positive outcomes for people, uh, people in the greatest need, people who require housing solutions that the market quite rightly isn't going to deliver because develop, a developer's job is to get the best return that they can on their investment. And that's not going to be the provision of affordable rental housing, uh, for people who need access to it. And that is why we need to work, uh, council, uh, needs to work with government and developers to collectively try and address, um, that market void. And, uh, on that cherry note, uh, thanks again, um, to my comrades in the public gallery. I really appreciate their work. And again, to the staff, it's been a truly remarkable effort. Um, but, you know, it is just the end of the beginning, as they say, and, uh, I look forward to, with the support of councils resourcing this work and making some progress on this in the next twelve months. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, reporting please.
A division has been called for. Excellent.
councillor Benson Pope. councillor Alda. councillor Gary.
Aye.
councillor Hall.
Aye.
councillor Hawkins. councillor Lefiso. councillor Lord. councillor Newell. councillor Staines.
Aye.
councillor Van de Vis. councillor Wiley. councillor Wilson. your worship.
Yes.
Carried twelve one.
It's carried, thank you. Now, we'll move on to the last item. Um, this is a request for support for remits. Oh, thank you, team. A request for support, uh, of remits to the LGNZ Annual General Meeting. There are two, one from the Fongarai District Council and the other from Waukataki District Council. They are outlined in your, um, on the, on the order paper. I think we will take them, we'll have to, we'll need to take them one at a time. So would, uh, for the purposes of, um, making a decision, would anyone, would someone like to move, uh, one way or the other on the, on one of the, or both of them if?
Um, your worship, I'd like to move both.
You move both? That's moved councillor Wiley. Second councillor Hall. Um, is there now, if you would, do you wish to speak to it?
Uh, yes, your worship. Um, I think, um, when I look at both of them, uh, they did make, uh, very much common sense. Uh, the one that I, well, actually both of them were really important. Uh, many of you probably wouldn't see much in the beauty industry, um, and what the importance of that one is. Not quite how I intended that to come out. I was last week. Um, but the, the part that has really, uh, when I look at the Fongarai District Council, um, seeking their support, um, with my daughter doing beauty therapy this year at Polytech, I've quickly taken a bit of an interest in, uh, what is happening in that industry and it is actually quite frightening. And I was just trying to find the story on stuff from a couple of weeks ago where it did talk about the hygiene issues, um, and how extensive they are and the damage it does, uh, and with infections and everything else. And to see what it talks about, the, um, hairdressing industry and looking for the parity in that area. Um, then the other, uh, remit being the one for the Waukataki District Council, well, it's absolutely tragic that, uh, anybody working on the side of the road and, uh, and doing their job gets killed, uh, in this day and age. So I, I'm happy to move both of these.
to the speakers, councillor Gary.
I'll follow up my colleague's blunder, um, by saying that I understand, uh, and I haven't checked this recently, so I'm very happy to be, stand corrected, that the health and, and beauty clinic industry is, is currently regulated under the tattooists. It's sort of all lumped in together. And, uh, I know I've had feedback, um, from some in the health and beauty industry that they find that very difficult. Um, uh, and that they, I, I believe they would welcome some changes in that regard. Uh, I haven't canvassed that in recent times, but it's certainly feedback I have had in the past. Um, the second remit around traffic management, um, couldn't be more relevant, uh, in a time when we have a lot of work going on around the city. But I'm particularly familiar with the work on the peninsula, on the Peninsula Connection, um, and the, uh, traffic management there. It's a pretty special kind of situation and that, um, the community, uh, in which that's happening are very tolerant, patient. Uh, I'm told that by some who've worked in the Kaikora situation even, that this is the most remarkable, um, scenario they've ever encountered where all of the motorists wave. And now it's, uh, the traffic management people wave as a matter of course. Um, so, but I know that it's not always like that. Uh, and people do, uh, speed and, uh, those folk that are out doing that traffic management are often at risk and, and do a wonderful job. Um, so it's certainly very relevant. I pass it every day when I come into work and when I go home, they do an amazing job. They should never be at risk. And just Sunday, a week ago, I attended a memorial for, for those who have been killed, uh, at work or injured. Um, and it was very sobering. Uh, and nobody should go to work, uh, and not come home. So I'm very happy to support both those remits on that basis.
councillor Van de Vis.
I would be happy to support them if I thought either of them would actually produce a positive result. I don't. More regulation of a largely unregulated health and beauty clinic industry, uh, basically just invites, uh, a plethora of new rules and bureaucracy around an industry which, um, largely doesn't need it, I believe. We already have, uh, a very well-established, uh, health, uh, requirements for most industries. Health and safety are paramount in any business that anyone ever sets up. You've got to write your own health and safety, um, manual if you want to run a business now in this country. It's got to be about this thick, the one I wrote certainly. And it's got to identify all the hazards particular to your industry. So it's, we already have, uh, bureaucracy to do that. Um, this is just asking for yet another level, uh, another alternate, uh, load of regulations, which I don't think are necessary. It's been mentioned that, uh, it's not that appropriate for a lot of health and beauty businesses to come under the tattooists' requirements. Uh, tattooists injecting substances under the skin, uh, I think do need to have their own particular, um, set of regulations. And if, uh, botox or anything else is done in a similar way, I think that those regulations are fair enough to be similar. I think we already have, uh, well enough regulation to cover all of those issues. Moving on to the way, Waikatani requirement for every possible opportunity to become aware of the work site ahead. Every possible opportunity, uh, basically leaves open the floodgates for unending costs with traffic management. Traffic management costs have risen spectacularly here in New Zealand in the last twenty years. Uh, to the extent that now if you're wanting to take a tree down near the side of the road or whatever, the traffic management costs usually exceed the cost of actually doing the work itself. We could go further, there's no doubt, and this is obviously what Waukataki wants to do, and Australia already has. My last visit to Australia, um, which was obviously paid by myself, the, um, the, the road, uh, shutting off of entire sections of road simply because a truck was unloading, uh, some jibboard, uh, onto a building site and having three people at either end of that road and endless traffic cones and the whole place shut down, uh, just shows how ridiculous this traffic management bureaucracy can become. I think it's already become fairly ridiculous here. The number of road cones that we have, the, uh, number of signs that we have, the length of the signage well before, up to a kilometre before you actually get to the roadworks, uh, has, has already got to a level which I think is excessive. Um, what it seems Waukataki are asking for is to make that particular, uh, bureaucracy, that particular cost on the business of doing business in New Zealand, uh, a, uh, even greater than it already is. I would dread to see us, um, following Australia down what is, uh, and, and a completely unaffordable uh, way of dealing with traffic management. Um, traffic management has become something of a joke in Australia only because it's undignified to cry about something that's, uh, so expensive. Uh, so people are just taken to laughing at it. Um, for all of these reasons, I can't, um, uh, on behalf of the public paying for all of this, uh, agree to vote for either of these remits.
to the speakers. Okay, um, your right of reply, councillor Wiley.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, I'll deal with the second, um, the Waukataki, uh, remit first. Uh, just a response to councillor Van de Vis. I think any, um, any remit that actually puts the safety of workers in place and making sure they go home safely, as, um, councillor Gary said, I think is highly important. Um, to be honest, having someone's mother or father, grandfather or grandmother be able to go to work and come home as per the signs out on the peninsula, I think is definitely worth recommending and, um, supporting going forward. So the other one, the, um, Fongarai District Council, I did find quickly the, um, article I was looking for on stuff and I'll just quickly, just to follow up on councillor Van de Vis's issues around the beauty and, um, health industry. Beauty salons has promoted, Wellington City Council to re- to consider regulating the industry. The regional public health survey released in March found there was a lack of understanding among many of the fifty-seven salons studied about that potential spread of infectious diseases and other health risks. Among the concerns were a lack of understanding among staff about cleaning, disinfecting, sterilising and storing equipment and limited knowledge about how blood-borne viruses and other infections were spread or controlled. I think that really sums it up, the importance of what the Fongarai District Council and, uh, Sheryl Ma is, uh, basically trying to put forward. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. I'm going to take these now, but I'm going to take them separately. Um, so the first one is the Fongarai, um, District Council remit. All those in favour, please say.
We have a division, please.
A division? Yep. Okay.
councillor Benson Pope. councillor Alda. councillor Gary.
Aye.
councillor Hall. councillor Hawkins. councillor Lefiso. councillor Lord. councillor Newell. councillor Staines.
Aye.
councillor Van de Vis. councillor Wiley. councillor Wilson. your worship.
Aye.
Carried twelve one.
Um, and could we, uh, have a division on the, a second one now, please, the Waukataki District Council remit?
Sure. councillor Benson Pope. councillor Alda. councillor Gary.
Aye.
councillor Hall. councillor Hawkins. councillor Lefiso. councillor Lord. councillor Newell. councillor Staines.
Aye.
councillor Van de Vis. councillor Wiley. councillor Wilson. your worship.
Aye.
carried twelve one.
Right. Thank you. So that's the end of the council, uh, meeting agenda. Uh, we are now, uh, heading into, um, the annual plan submissions. Um, we were to start at ten fifteen. Oh, it's still only ten past. So we'll probably be on time. I'll see you in there.